All right, so we're being recorded. All right, we'll go ahead and open this special meeting. It's to conduct interviews and hopefully selections. For our planning commission, we have three vacancies. One to complete a term, so a short term, and then two of full terms. And so what we normally do is go into executive session to discuss what questions we'll ask. And and then discuss the candidates and then come back out and have a public discussion and vote. But Leslie, I see you've just come on. Are we doing something differently today?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Medvee and council. I'm looking at the, what's on the agenda for today, and I don't see that there was an indication that the council would go into executive session to discuss the questions. The only thing that's listed is that it would go into executive session after the interviews.
Okay.
To discuss the qualifications.
Okay, so let's discuss the questions publicly then. What I'd like to do is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. Obviously, we need to ask each of the candidates the same questions. That's a process that's completely alien to me. Throughout my career in different aspects, we normally would read the resumes and then follow up on the resumes or ask pertinent questions and follow up questions depending on answers. We don't do that here, and I'm not bucking the system. But what I'd like to do is offer each counselor a question. You should stick to your script and ask the same question of each counselor. Sometimes I've seen deviations that modify the question and then that deviates from our process. What I'd like to do is just a simple introduction, explaining the process to the candidates, and then we would go in order of districts to Councilor Young, Belkot, Bowerman, Marshall, and then back to me for the concluding question, which would just be a general follow up. Do you wish to expand or add any on any question you've already been asked? So I would like, I don't need to ask a specific question other than a follow up question. With that in mind, is the council okay with that? I think it's just a little bit more direct, a little bit more abbreviated. But you each get a question to ask of each candidate.
Do, would we, that sounds good to me. Would we like to share what questions we're planning to ask? I wrote one up and I sent it out to folks this, this morning, but I'd be happy to share it now.
Okay, so everyone's good with that? Any objections to that process? Then let's go right into the questions.
And Chair Medvee, if I may interrupt, I do see two people called in. And one of them is, I think, one of the first, the first candidate was calling, and one is Bowerman. So do you mind if I identify which is which very quick?
Yes, yes, we certainly.
Okay.
I guess if it's open to the public, the candidates, I mean, that's one of the issues.
Yeah, the process is usually they wait in the lobby until their turn and okay.
Go ahead, go ahead and identify the callers, please.
Okay, so it looks like one of the callers, I'm asking to unmute you, I think you have to push star six.
Hey, is Dan helping? Can you hear me now?
Yes, okay, perfect, so I'm
Is there any way that I can get audio? I mean, video, video, I'm sorry.
Not when you're called in, no. You can still try to log in on your computer, and if that starts working, you can hang up your phone.
Oh, okay, great, well, I'll do that.
Okay.
Throughout, thank you.
Yeah, and it's certainly most important to have you in the executive session. And then afterwards, when we come back out, we're for nominations, discussion and voting.
Yes, and I would like to check the other caller, is this Brian Halbert?
Yes, this is Brian on the line.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Brian. I'm going to move you back over in a few minutes after the council's done discussing.
Thank you.
Thank you, no problem.
I think we should run through the questions so we're not accidentally all asking the same question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure Kristen had completed what she needed to do. So Kristen, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's go ahead with Counselor Young. Did you have a question already in mind?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask pretty much the same question as I did last year, which is, was it last year? I don't know if it was last year or how long ago it was, but which is essentially if they have had and if they've been involved with in the decision making process, and if they haven't been involved in the decision making process, if they've followed a process, had an opinion on a land use issue and how they came to their conclusion and what the issue was. I'm having technology problems, I'm trying to pull it up on my computer and I can't get it, so.
Yeah, so the only thing, so that's great. I was just gonna make sure you had it written down so you could be concise and
Yeah, I'm working on that.
Use the same words every time.
I cannot get.
Any, any addition or comments based on Glenn's proposed question?
That sounds good.
Okay, perfect. Michelle Belkot?
I'm gonna use the same question I used as well, and it was last year, I can't believe it. And my question was, if you were advising the planning commission on its GMA role, what would you advise? And I'll just say Growth Management Act instead of using the acronym, so they're clear.
Any comments or amplifications by other counselors? Okay, sounds great.
Yep.
Karen, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, I can't see you. I'm gonna use the interview question, I think I used it before. It's on the list that I was emailed. When you disagree with planning staff on all varieties of technical aspects, how do you deal with that? I could just say, when you disagree with planning staff, how do you deal with that? So either way.
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm seeing and hearing no objection. And then Sue, to you.
Yep, I have a new question. In your role as planning commissioner, you will be making recommendations on the comp plan update that will guide growth and development over the next 20 years. There are often competing interests and now new directives on climate change and housing affordability. Would you be able to set aside any personal beliefs or conflicts in order to address the broader community needs and meet GMA requirements? Kind of long.
I would put in a how. The reason being that has an obvious answer, and the answer is, of course I'll set them aside.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want just a yes or no. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, it does presume that they have biases and pressures in a single focus. As a judge, I always first would explore if you do have biases and prejudices, and then can you set them aside? But your question's great, no problems. Any other comments or questions? All right, we've allocated 15 minutes per candidate, and we're basically right on time if we go into executive session. I'm sorry, Sue, you had, did you have something?
Chair, yes, I do have a question. I was not sure on how we make decisions about, and maybe we deal with this in executive session, the one short term and then the two longer terms.
Yeah, so we can take guidance or suggestions from Leslie, but I think that is an executive discussion in part, but as far as how it gets allocated, who makes a motion? I think what we, what we've discussed in the past is the motion would include whether it's for a full term or a short term. And then that public becomes a public discussion. Leslie, did you wish to add to that?
Yes, thank you. So the purpose of the executive session under 1G is to discuss the evaluation concerning the interviews. There can't be a determination or discussion as to, oh, I'm going to nominate this particular person for this particular time. So I think if you want to state right now, before you get into the interviews, to state that what the positions are that are open, just so that's communicated to the public right now and right before you jump in, so that counselors can be thinking about that. But I do not suggest discussing that particular part during executive session. Does that make sense?
I would add to that, that, or maybe disagree slightly, because without taking votes, without discussing who you're gonna nominate for which position, you could freely discuss of the five candidates, which ones may be best suited for a short term based on their resume and, and their questions and answer. But, but it does need to be all dealt with in public when we come out of executive session. So no, no straw votes during our executive session, and the nomination should be specific. And I would recommend that the very first nomination maybe be for the short term, so we get that out of the way right away. Is that okay, Leslie? Does that sound okay?
I think it is okay for counselors in executive session to talk about their qualifications in light of the short or long term. However, counselors should not be agreeing or disagreeing, just stating sort of their opinion, if that makes sense.
Okay, I think we're all experienced enough with those rules, so let's stay on time. We're two minutes late. So we're gonna go into executive session. I understood I was gonna get a different computer, so I'm not sure how that's gonna impact me. Yeah.
I don't believe we're going into executive session now. We will go into executive session at the end, after the interviews, because that's when the discussion of the qualifications will take place.
Got it, you're right. I'm kind of confused by the fact that we don't have different, we're not in person. We don't have different rules to, rooms to move to. All right, so let's go ahead and Kristen, move the first candidate over into, before us.
Okay, I just did. And Brian Halbert, if this is you, I think you have to push star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, Brian here.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, Brian, welcome. I don't see you, so you don't have the ability to be on a video?
Yeah, my apologies, I don't. Good morning, counselors. No, I'm out of town in a hotel with limited bandwidth.
Okay, well, thanks for going to the extra, I know this is probably short notice of schedule. So we're gonna each ask you a question. You'll have a total of 15 minutes for your answers.
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll just, we'll basically have one question each. Mine will be just a general follow up. But we just wanna get to know you a little bit beyond your resume and the service you've already given to the planning commission. Do you have any questions before we start?
Not ready to go.
Thank you, so we'll go first with Counselor Young.
Yes, Brian, it's a pleasure to have you here this morning. And I did wanna thank you for your service on the planning commission and just let you know how important the commission is to me and our other counselors. You know, I watch virtually every one of your meetings, and, and I appreciate the dialogue that takes place. So thank you for your service. With that, some other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, go, sorry.
So my question for you?
Probably the delay caught me, go, go for it.
Yep. My question for you is, the planning commission deals largely with important land use issues. Some candidates have been involved in land use decisions directly, and some have been involved in the decision making process in other ways. Can you describe a time when you made a decision or had an opinion about a difficult planning or development issue? What was that issue? What was your ultimate decision or opinion, and how did you make it?
Yeah, thank you. Of course, now I get a frog in my throat, this is to get started here. Yeah, probably nothing more controversial than Rock versus Neighbors. And, you know, in every case that comes, that I've been involved with, that has come before the planning commission. You know, I do my research, reading the CIFA, reading the staff reports, reading the the presentation and meeting with staff, of course, at our workshops. I generally visit the sites and then read, and read the public comments. And then I try to approach it from an open standpoint and understand both sides of the issues. And on Rock, of course, you know, the, the right for the owner to use his property and the balance with the public's need for the commodity and the neighbors', you know, right to a right to a peaceful existence with the quarry, very difficult decisions in all those cases. So I just do my best to take it all in and listen and make a decision or a vote that I think is the right vote based on the information in front of me.
Thank you.
Personally, yeah, personally, I've been involved in, but you know, on behalf of my clients, submitting land use applications, and, and I don't think that's what you're asking, though, is it?
No, but that's okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Michelle Belkot?
Good morning, Brian. All right, my question is, is if you are advising the planning commission on its Growth Management Act role, what would be some of your potential recommendations or considerations?
Ooh, tough one. Yeah, I understand that the state has mandated some additional challenges to the, to the GMA review. And, and I know that the buildable lands, the, the housing study all play into our, our review and advise, advisement on the GMA. You know, trying to get a handle on the GMA, it's a fairly large piece of legislation. It's, there's a lot to it. And so, you know, for us on the commission, I would say we, we absorb bits at a time and not try and take the whole thing in at once. And I appreciate how staff is really helping us work through that. Not any, not trying to take on the entire elephant, but just eating that a little bit at a time. So that's probably the best way to take on the GMA, and I appreciate that. There's a length of time that we need to work through it and certain deadlines, but it seems like we're on a, on a good path to respond or to have the updated GMA in place.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Brian, this is Karen Gil Bowerman, I'm District Three. And I have the pleasure of asking you about disagreements. So when you disagree with planning staff on all varieties of either technical aspects or other aspects of the questions at hand, how do you deal with that?
Yeah, good one, and it does happen. Certainly, first and foremost, I appreciate staff, I appreciate their hard work. They, they put a lot into it. You know, I get the privilege of looking from the outside in on a lot of these issues, because I'm in the private sector, dealing with day to day issues. But in every case, I feel like I've dealt with staff very respectfully. We, you know, there may become a time that we agree to disagree, but staff's also, I think when you approach it from a respect standpoint, they're willing to take a look at, you know, how they came to that conclusion. And, and staff hands are tied a lot of times. The codes and the statutes require a certain course that we don't always have to agree with on the planning commission. But I think I have a really good relationship with staff in that respect, and that if I do disagree with them, they're, it's not a personal attack. It's, it's just stating my view of the facts. So, and, and same with the other board members on the planning commission. We often disagree, probably seen by our votes. But I think it's done respectful enough that when we get to leave the room, we can still shake hands, and there's not a, not a personal attack. It's our different views of how we see the issues.
Thank you.
And Karen, my apologies for not calling on you. I was, I didn't have my mouse in my hand to unmute. I was taking notes from the last answer, so my apologies to you. So now we'll go to Sue Marshall.
Hi, Brian, thanks for stepping up to apply for another term. So I represent District Five, the northern part of the county, more rural area. So my question is, in your role as planning commissioner, you will be making recommendations on the comp plan update that will guide growth and development over the next 20 years. There's often competing interests and now new directives related to climate change and housing affordability. How would you be able to set aside any personal beliefs or conflicts in order to address the broader community needs and meet GMA requirements?
Yeah, that's, that's a good one. And certainly, my life experiences have shaped me to where I'm at today, and sometimes hard to set aside those bias. Although, as a general contractor, I'm often doing the work of, on behalf of my clients that I may not agree with, and yet I still do it and execute it well. And I, and in such a way that it's not an animosity or a, or a, I told you so in, in that process. So I'm, I, I can compartmentalize, and I do look at issues from all standpoints, and including the GMA and climate change and the housing. Again, I may not agree with every point of it, but I also know that a good legislation is, is going to have some flaws in it. And, and holding up an entire, entirely good legislation because of a few disagreements isn't my, isn't the way I would approach it either. I'd rather be, you know, good legislation with a few flaws than, than not making progress at all and, and, you know, the benefit to our community being delayed because of that. So I just, I just don't ever, for myself, I just don't ever stand on an issue to the point where it's you know, fall on my sword because of one issue. I would rather look at an entire legislation and recommend that it be moved along, adjusting where I can, adjusting where I have influence.
Yeah, thanks, thanks so much, Brian.
Okay, Brian, Gary Medvee, and I am the acting chair this year. I just wanted to give you an opportunity in the remaining minutes to amplify any answer you've given, if you thought of, oh, boy, I wish I had said this, or, or you wanna expand on any of the answers you've given so far. But now would be your opportunity.
Okay. Boy, you know, I have enjoyed, I think, six years of being on the planning commission. I've learned a lot, but I've also, I feel like I've brought a lot to the table. I've been building in Clark County now for more than 30 years. Have my own business now for 12 years. And as a commercial industrial design, build, general contractor, I am in land use and codes continually and, and working my clients' projects through different jurisdictions. So I appreciate the chance to work from within the, you know, Clark County's jurisdiction and bring some value to that, to that process. It's not perfect, it's, but it's a, it's a great process. And, and I enjoy, I've enjoyed Clark County, I've raised my family here, and I wanna see Clark County continue on for my kids and their kids. And it's a great community to be in. And I, I do like the process, and I do like helping educate our, our, our public that comes to these meetings and, and, you know, with, without an understanding of our process. But I've talked to them after the meetings when they leave, and they're like, most of them are very appreciative of the process we go through. So I, I'd like the openness of how we handle this process in Clark County.
Okay, thank you for that. If we stay on schedule, we'll go into and then come out of executive session around 10:30. If you wanted to come back and watch the nominations and voting that we expect to occur. Anyway, good luck to you, Brian, and thank you so much for willing to serve again.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. Whether it's selected or not, it's been an honor to serve. And if I'm selected, it'll be an honor to continue on. And, and I probably won't stick around, but I'll, I'll look forward to hearing the results.
Thank you. Okay, Kristen, I think we have your syllabus next.
Yes, and I'm letting him in the meeting now.
And Peter, can you hear us okay? Well, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect. Okay, welcome. We'll have about 15 minutes. We'll each ask you a question. And at, at the end, we'll go into executive session, then come back about 10:30 for nominations and voting. So, you know, it's just an opportunity for us to get to know you a little better, more so than just off your resume and cover letter. So you ready to start?
You bet, thank you.
All right, so we'll start with Glenn Young.
Good morning, Peter, thank you for applying for the planning commission. I'm Glenn Young, Clark County, Council, District One, which is west side of Vancouver essentially. And my question to you this morning is, the planning commission deals largely with important land use issues. Some candidates have been involved in land use decisions directly, and some have been involved in the decision making process in other ways. Can you describe a time when you made a decision or had an opinion about a difficult planning or development issue? What was that issue, and what was your decision or opinion, and how did you make it?
Well, you probably already understand from my resume that I did get to work as a policy analyst directly for the Clark County Council for years. And during that time, we did go through, we were going through the Growth Management Plan Update, which had several facets to that, including, you know, shoreline, the shore, state shoreline plan, also the, you know, alternative for, for the Clark County rural areas that a couple of the counselors supported. And so I've got to witness the process. I understand that, how detailed it is, a lot of the legal requirements that a lot of people don't understand. My role at that point was not to make, maybe be a public figure advocating my own viewpoints, but to private, it was more privately advising the counselors of what my position was. My, my view was that it was your, your agenda as county counselors, and it wasn't my role necessarily to be a public advocate for a position, if that makes sense. So it was a little bit more subtle, but there were details in, in those plans where I saw that the counselors were maybe overreaching or maybe didn't understand specific issues that I advised them on privately so that they could make a public statement in that area. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, great, thank you.
And Michelle Belkot?
Good morning, Peter. I'm Michelle Belkot, County Counselor, District Two, which is Salmon Creek, Flida, Hazelville, Minnehaha, and out to five corners. I think with your experience, you'll like my question. If you were advising the planning commission on its Growth Management Act role, what would be some of your potential recommendations or considerations?
What the planning commission reviews is stuff that's already been generated by staff because of triggers that are outside of our direct influence, you know, like state requirements. Obviously, most of, most of what they're doing is trying to comply with state laws and requirements in regards to what we have to produce as a county to comply with those requirements. But I do think there are some things that have been overlooked or maybe not pursued that could be done in rural areas, and maybe if I was in that position, I could suggest that. One of, one of those is, is modeled off of our Clark County. We currently have a plan for, for doing cluster developments in rural areas. Unfortunately, most of the areas where that would qualify for that have been used up, so that I don't think that that cluster development ordinance has been utilized as much lately because there's no land that you can do it, do it on. But there are other things along that model that we could do to preserve rural open space and areas while while at the same time promoting some rural development. So I think it could be a win-win on both sides. But having produced a suggestion, I also wrote that the process would be, hey, produce a suggestion. Let staff work through the details and work through the process to make sure it complies with all of the state requirements and the county process requirements that we have to do to comply and make wise decisions and balanced decisions when coming to that. But I think I would have some suggestions on things that we could do if the councillors would like to hear those.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Karen Bowerman.
Good morning, Peter. We thank you for your application here. You've done a lot to benefit the county, and your, your application and potential service here would be yet another important area. So my question deals with when you disagree with planning staff. So if you disagree with planning staff on a variety of either technical aspects of the question at hand or other details of the question at hand, how do you deal with that?
Disagreement and civility is something that, I think, looking at the political situation, we see a lot of bad examples on, on how to handle disagreements because of politics and news, and it seems to be very adversarial. But I think it's recognizing on both sides, we have to have a civil conversation. Feel free to share our opinions and perspectives, but also recognize expertise and opinions on both sides. And for example, if I produced an opinion and said, hey, I look at this, this way, if I can't persuade other people through my communication to come to my side, then becoming more adversarial about it isn't going to become more persuasive. And working in the county, in a commission, or working with staff is a collaborative process. So by its nature, it has to be cooperative. So you have to communicate and maintain and be committed to maintaining a communication that is civil and cooperative and just recognize, and sometimes you might be fully committed to believing a position is a bad position. But if you can't be persuasive, or, you know, the Planning Commission is seven members. If you can't even persuade one person to come to your side, you have to recognize, maybe you're wrong and you're seeing it wrong. So I think it takes both sides, but it also takes a commitment to, by the individual to be cooperative.
Thank you.
And Sue Marshall.
Here we go. Thank you, Peter. I'm Sue Marshall. I represent District Five. So it's that northern rural area that you mentioned. In your role as Planning Commissioner, you will be making recommendations on the comp plan update that will guide growth and development over the next 20 years. There's often competing interests and now new directives from the state related to climate change and housing affordability. How would you be able to set aside any personal beliefs or conflicts in order to address the broader community need and to meet the GMA requirements?
A lot of people don't recognize at the county level that a lot of what we are required to do under the Growth Management Plan is driven by decisions that have already been made by the state legislature. Not, but, and it can't be overwritten, ignored, or not dealt with at the county level. You're obligated to do that. So I recognize there's a lot of people politically that might want to push back at all costs. But you have to choose and say, where am I allowed to have an influence? Where am I allowed to make a decision? And where am I required by state law to produce something? So I might not agree with the idea of zoning and growth management at all, but it's not going to change the fact that it's a state requirement, and we have to figure out how to best comply with that at the local level. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Peter, in the remaining minutes that we have, if you, in retrospect, wish to have amplified or came up with a different answer on any of those questions, now would be your opportunity to basically add to your answers previously given. And then, as I mentioned in the beginning, we'll go into executive session eventually, and then come out hopefully about 10:30 or so to make nominations and vote. You're, you'd be welcome to come back and log in and watch. But anyway, do you have any amplifications you'd like to make on any of the questions and answers?
I would just emphasize that I do have some experience. I think I have a, having seen the process, I understand it a little bit and a detail that the average person's not going to. I think I can explain a lot of those issues to the average citizen that is not familiar with the process as well. And that's one of the things that I did in my previous role as a policy analyst. A lot of that was dealing with the public. And they would come with the perspective of, we want to fight against this, thinking that the question on the table was something that it wasn't. So by reframing that and explaining to them, what is the decision on the table that you are discussing, it helped them to understand the process and what, how, what influence they could have. So I think I understand the process and I could be helpful in that area. I would also like to suggest that a lot of people you have on the Planning Commission are, come from a professional development or a, whether land development or construction background. There's also another element that has a lot of frustration when they deal with the county, and that's individual homeowners that come and apply for permits. So it's not just huge companies that are developing the ground and, and building lots of houses that have to deal with the county, but individual permit applicants as well. And those seem to be, based on my past experience, the ones that derive the most frustration because a lot of the county law is very technical and driven and understood by the professionals and not, not necessarily easy to understand by the landowners, especially rural landowners. So I think I can bring that perspective. I think I could have positive input, input to your process. Hopefully, I could help achieve whatever your councillor objectives are as councillors. Like I said, my previous role as a policy analyst was a support role to whatever your objectives are. You are the elected council members of the county. So ultimately, whatever the Planning Commission is approving should be kind of with what are your objectives and have that in mind with what, what are they pushing back on or not pushing back on at the advisory board level. So I do appreciate your consideration. I was encouraged to throw my hat in the ring, and I appreciate your nominating me and giving me a chance to, to speak to you today.
Okay, thank you for all that and for your willingness to serve. So we'll go ahead and we're now, I think, a minute ahead of time. But I'm assuming that Jeremy Baker is ready to be switched over.
And actually, first, Peter, I'm going to remove you from the meeting, but you're more than welcome to, I'll move you back to the lobby. You can join back later, or we, of course, can contact you.
All right. Thank you, councillors.
And council, I actually do not see Jeremy Baker yet, but I was thinking about giving him a call here in just a moment. I did speak to him this morning, though.
Okay, well, let's, if you can do that quickly, otherwise, do we have anyone else waiting?
No, no, I don't see.
Okay, well, then we have choice. Okay, we'll take a pause while you see if you can connect with him.
Okay, and councillors, I am on the phone with Jeremy Baker, just assisting, logging in. Oh, looks like he's here, so I'll let him in the meeting.
So, Jeremy, I see you. Can you hear us okay? Maybe not. Jeremy, can you hear us? Can you, can you hear us?
I can't hear anything.
Okay, we can hear you. So Kristen, can you see if there's any solution from our end? Or maybe text him, call him, ask about?
Yes, yes, I'm contacting him now.
Thank you. So Jeremy, I think I can still hear your microphone. Can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Oh, perfect. All right, well, let's get going then. We have about 15 minutes to interview each of the councillors. We'll ask a question. And then at the end of all of our interviews, we'll go into executive session and then come out into the public for discussion and nominations and hopefully voting. And if we stay on schedule or close to it, that'll be about 10:30, and you're certainly welcome to come back at that time. So are you ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll start with councillor Young.
Good morning, Jeremy. Pleasure to have you back here again in front of us.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us, inviting me.
So my question is, the Planning Commission deals largely with important land use issues. Some candidates have been involved in land use decisions directly, and some have been involved in the decision-making process in other ways. Can you describe a time when you made a decision or had an opinion about a difficult planning or development issue? What was the issue? What was your decision or opinion? And how did you make it?
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn, for that question. I, to be honest, I have not been part of any land use decision-making processes or, or have been involved in, like, actively looking for, for that kind of, kind of input, you know. My, my, the reason for applying for the Planning Commission was the desire to be an active servant for the community. And so it, this is just one of the elements of my ability to, to serve the community is, you know, give my insight and be thoughtful and try to help you, the council, with these tough decisions. Because some of them are tough, you know, we're, as we, as we grow as a county, you know, we want to make sure we have sustainable land use that allows our children to be able to thrive and succeed here in this county. You know, I've, I've been here my whole life, my children, I have four sons that are, are going to be here for a long time as well. And the reason I'm applying for this position was to lend my voice in a thoughtful way.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Michelle Velcom.
Good morning, Jeremy. I'm Michelle Velcom, County Councillor, District Two, which is Salmon Creek, Falida, Minnehaha, Hazel Dell, and out to five corners. My question for you is, if you were advising the Planning Commission on its Growth Management Act role, what would be some of your potential recommendations or considerations?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Velcom. So I think it's important to understand that, like, planning, as I see it, the Planning Commission is really here to help you as the council really implement the state's laws and procedures in a, in a way that's, you know, in line with the state legislature's position on it. And so my, my goal would be to make sure that, that when we make decisions, that we are accomplishing what the state legislature is asking us to do, but do it in a way that serves the county in the, in the most, in the best way, right? To make sure that we're sectioning off land that is good for farming, to make sure that we keep that farming. And maybe there's some other land, make sure that we're using the, the land that we have available to us that fits the Growth Management Plan, but also, but do it in a very thoughtful and deliberate way so we can make sure that we're not building houses on all the farm, good farmland. And then we can, can't have that, that agricultural part of the county. Because I think that, that rural aspect of the county is very important to, you know, nurture and make sure it's sustainable.
Thank you, Jeremy.
And Karen.
I will not wait for an introduction. This is Karen Del Fower, but I'm councillor for District Three, Jeremy, and it's a pleasure to chat with you. My question involves your times when you disagree with staff. So the question is, when you disagree with planning staff on, say for instance, technical aspects of the question at hand or other aspects of the question, how do you deal with that disagreement?
Oh, thank you. So I, to be honest, I try to take a very, very empathetic approach. You know, I see, I see myself as just one voice, and I, I do not take any of, any of my thoughts as, you know, like, that's my personal, that's my personal opinion, but that does not, if you guys, if someone disagrees with me, I don't take that personal, and I don't, I don't think that their disagreement unvalidates their opinion as well. So what I like to, when I am in a conversation, if I disagree with someone, I like to try to put myself in their position and figure out what, why is it that they're thinking that way? And so if I can, if I can understand them a little bit better, then, then I can understand their thought process a little bit better. And to be honest, I, I respect everybody for the valuable human being that they are. They don't have to agree with me, and I don't think it's important for, for them to, for them to agree with me. I mean, I'm just part, I'm just one voice. And if, if people think something that I disagree with, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go with the, the rest of the commission. So it's, it's really about respect and, and making sure I, I approach everybody with love. And that's, that's how I live my life. And so I do not see a problem with me dealing with difficult situations. I do that in work all the time. You know, I deal with customers and big, big mill owners and whatnot. And a lot of times, we're at loggerheads. But as long as you approach any conversation with respect, and you just come in, come into it with open, an open mindset. and you just come in, come into it with open, an open mindset, you, you're really able to come up with good solutions that benefit everybody.
Thank you.
And Sue Marshall.
Thank you, thank you, Jeremy, for applying again. I'm, I'm glad you didn't give up on us. So I'm Sue Marshall, I represent District Five, which is the northern rural, almost half of the county. So my question is, in your role as planning commissioner, you will be making recommendation on the comprehensive plan update that will guide growth and development over the next twenty years. There's often competing interests, and now there's new directives from the state related to climate change and housing affordability. How would you be able to set aside your personal beliefs and possibly conflicts in order to address the broader community needs and to meet GMA requirements?
All right, sorry, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I, I plugged in something and it went sideways. And so, thank you for that question, Ms. Marshall. So I, I, I really think it goes back to what Ms. Baurman was talking about. I'm invested in this community, but just because I have an opinion doesn't mean it's the right opinion, and I, and I respect everybody else's opinion, but more, more than that, everything that I have been doing in this last year, since I applied for this planning commission last year, I've been working towards trying to help the children in our community. I, I'm on the board of Asko International, which is a wrestling club, on, on the board of Reed, Reed Northwest, and I want to be on the planning commission, so, so I can help the county deal with the directives that are coming down from the state, and do it in a way that's very thoughtful, and in, in line with what the state is asking us to do. I, you know, I'm, I'm just, moment, I'm trying to be the tool for you in the council to, to make sure that we are abiding by what the state is asking us to do, and I do that with a mindset that I want the next generation to be successful. I want, I want my children to, to love Clark County and want to stay in Clark County, and have their children in Clark County, and, and just make it a, a better place for all. So none, none of this is personal for me, I don't have an agenda, I just want to, I, I literally want to help the county for the, for the kids, for the next generation, try to make it a better, better than what I have.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, so as, as the chair, I just wanted to remind you, number one, we'll, you know, after we complete all the interviews, we'll go into executive session, discuss credentials and what we heard, question and answers today, and then come back approximately ten thirty into open session to have nominations and votes. So we welcome you back to come and watch that process. What I'd like to give you the opportunity now, in our remaining minutes, is to expand or qualify anything that came to mind as a result of the previous questions and answers of any of the councilors. If you wish to expand on any of your answers, now would be the time to do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. I think, I think it is important for me just to make, just to emphasize that, that I'm coming in, into this position, this interview, and hopefully be on the planning commission with open arms. Not, not trying to push one, one thing or another, I just want to be part of the solution, just be thoughtful, be very deliberate, and, and just make sure that, that you guys have the tools that you need to, to do your job. I, I, I want, I want to be basically a servant to the community. So I think, I think, I think that, that driving goal of mine of trying to better this community for the community is really where I stand, and, and if you guys choose to have me on the planning commission, I'll be very grateful. If you choose to have someone else that's more qualified than me, then that's awesome as well, because I really want what's best for this community, nothing more.
Okay, thank you, once again, for applying and for your willing, willingness to commit to serving your community. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move you over, and next candidate, I believe, is Mark Burkhoke.
Yes, and I will let him in now, one moment.
Okay, good morning, Mark, I'm Karen Medveji. We're gonna have about fifteen minutes for question and answer. Each councillor will get a chance to ask a question. And at the conclusion, we'll continue on with our interviews, and then we'll go into executive session. We hope to come out, if we can stay on time at about ten thirty, back out into the public for nominations and just open discussion as well as voting. So please come back and join us at that time.
Okay.
And I, I can hear you fine, I assume you can hear us fine?
I can. I'm ready, let's go.
All right, so we'll go right to councillor Glenn Young.
Yes, good morning. I appreciate you taking the time to submit your application and your willingness to be, you know, able to serve in our community. So my question is, the planning commission deals largely with important land use issues. Some candidates have been involved in land use decisions directly, and some have been involved in the decision-making process in other ways. Can you describe a time when you made a decision or had an opinion about a difficult planning or development issue? What was that issue? What was your decision or your opinion, and how did you make it?
Wow, okay. The, the situation that comes to mind was actually involving a school, and we had a school next to a park. And it's kind of land use kind of agreement, but it gives you an example of my problem-solving abilities. There was an agreement years back for, that when the city had the park done, the fence between the park and the school would be removed. And so the time came, park was done, fence was taken out, and the next board meeting, all the residents were, many residents, were at the school board meeting because they also had found out there was a halfway house for people being released from prison, and located within a block. And they didn't want those people in the park, obviously, having access without a fence to kids. And so the school board directed me as assistant man, assistant superintendent to go take care of it. So I called the company, go ahead and put the fence back in. I received a call the morning they were there and said, Mark, the city is here, and they say if we put a pole in, they're gonna pull it right back out. So I said, okay, I'll be there. Took me about ten minutes to get there, and I'm looking on the curb, no shot mark of the property line. Things were kind of loosey-goosey. And so assessing the situation, I said, tell you what, do we have any disagreement that the blacktop of the playground is on school property? Nope, city was fine with that. Told the fence guys, sink the fence on the school property in the, in the pavement. End of story, everybody's happy, except the city, but it protected the kids. So I've had a number of situations that I've dealt with, with land, usually from a user standpoint and dealing with planning commissions. And the city of Victorio was a big part of that, but, you know, changing zoning, working developer deal with the Las Vegas property owner. And I mentioned that in briefly in my resume, and so I feel very comfortable doing that and used to construction and things like that, so.
Great, thank you for, for sharing that information with us. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you.
It will now go to councillor Michelle Belkot.
Good morning, Mark. I'm councillor Michelle Belkot, District Two, which is Salmon Creek, Falida, Hazel Dell, Minnehaha, and out to five corners. My question for you is, if you're advising the planning commission on its Growth Management Act role, what would be some of your potential recommendations or considerations?
Well, having never done that before, I'm slightly at a disadvantage. But I would, I would do research, talk with the four of you. There's additional things I should be aware of, being a junior member. And, and then I would also talk with, open it up with various neighbors, you know, residents within District Five, and see if any of them had opinions. But I'd be looking, number one, on what's best for the residents first of District Five, but also the big picture of what's best for the county as a whole. Sometimes you gotta give a little to, to get ahead and make the big picture, and so I, I would be open to all of input of all, like that.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on to councillor Karen Baurman.
Good morning, this is Karen Del Baurman, and I'm the councillor for District Three. And you've already alluded to some disagreements that you have had, which is a, a normal kind of thing, we all have disagreements, right? But when you disagree, particularly with planning staff on all variety of either technical aspects or other aspects of a decision, how do you deal with that disagreement?
The disagreements usually come from my initial understanding of an issue, and my, my initial, after that, response is to find out from whoever has the opposing view what the issues are, what they're concerned about, and see if there's any potential options that they have that they would be comfortable with. So then I have a full picture of what the other side, so to speak, is looking at, is dealing with, and then again, I'm a representative of my district, and so I'm going to look to them for, you know, some input, see how they feel. I would like to think that every one in my district is gonna have the same opinions as me, but we know that's not always the case. So, yeah, I have to remain open to that, because I'm representative of the whole, not just of one or two.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to councillor Sue Marshall.
Hi, Mark, thanks for applying, and I'm Sue Marshall, I represent District Five, that you mentioned, there's a lot of opinions, I might just add, in District Five. But my question is, in your role as planning commissioner, you will be making recommendations on the comprehensive plan update that will guide growth and development over the next twenty years. There are often competing interests, and now new directives from the state related to climate change and housing affordability. How would you be able to set aside your personal beliefs or conflicts in order to address the broader community needs and to meet the GMA requirements?
Oh, I have to say, that ability to do that, I think is one of my greatest strengths. Because I learned early on in my career, don't take and think personally, unless you did personally said something or did something, that's a different story. But any issue you're working with, encountering, your job as a public servant is to make the best possible choices, recommendations, and back to everything kind of I've spoken, referred to throughout the interview, is that is, comes from research, from looking, get as much information as possible, talking to your constituents, and the rest of my, the councilors, and then make a recommendation and go from there.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Mark, Gary Medveji, I'm the chair, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to amplify or expand on any of your previous answers to any of the questions that were just asked of you. And again, we'll come back at about ten thirty into public session to discuss the nominations and hopefully vote. And you're welcome to rejoin us at that time. But in the last remaining minutes that we have, is there any question that you, in giving your answer, you'd like to expand on or amplify?
Well, if I can, I'll take it just a little step further on, on that basis. If you notice my resume, I've, I've been working for four years, actually, four and a half years or more, with the Clascan High School District in Oregon. And I'm actually involved in finishing up an issue with a vendor who did shoddy work, and I saved the district about a quarter million dollars by arranging an inspector, nationally certified inspector from the East Coast to come out and get the nitty-gritty forensic analysis of what was done wrong, and the company has agreed to do that. We're totally under warranty with no charge. Although that, we are gonna have an inspector from the district to make sure that they do follow the instructions. And so throughout that process, you know, I was actually fighting our, our general contractor, design-build, and it wasn't popular, I was being blamed for a lot of stuff and a lot of leverage, and they were trying to really push back. And I just, here again, step back, what's the best way to approach this? And, and for the grace of God, I got the, the best inspector, I think, in the nation, if not the world, as far as flooring. We connected, he came out, I spoke to him yesterday during his lunch hour for half an hour at no charge. Just, you know, you build relationships, and those relationships, as people get to know you, that you're, you're a straight shooter, you're looking for the best, you're, you don't have a personal interest, you don't have a personal agenda, other than to make sure that the best possible choice and recommendation is made. And that's where it stops. And so I think that's one of the reasons I've been so successful. And I would bring that to the table for the planning commission, so. But I will say this with a caveat. I know I'm one of five, and obviously, you're going to make the best decision, and I, I strongly encourage that. If I was in your shoes, I would make the best position, or best choice of persons regardless. So I, I applaud you for your efforts and reaching out. So, thank you.
Thank you for that concluding comment, and we will, we will move you over, and I, I do want to personally thank you for applying, and with your willingness to serve the county in, on the commission role. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move you over and move, and Weaver into the interview room.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I do see Dan on one moment here. Okay, Dan, I believe I briefly heard you for a moment, I don't know if you have a camera or not.
I do.
I, I see him, and I hear him.
Oh, perfect.
So it sounds like you can hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay, so it's Karen Medveji here. We're gonna spend about fifteen minutes. Each councillor will ask you a, a question, and I think this is actually our last interview, so we'll go into executive session, discuss the candidates, and then come back out, hopefully at about ten thirty, for public discussion and nominations and voting. So after the conclusion of the interview, you're welcome to come, welcome to come back at about ten thirty or so. Each councillor will get a, an opportunity to ask you a question. Are you ready to proceed?
I am ready.
Super. All right, we'll start with councillor Glenn Young.
Good morning, Dan, it's a pleasure to have you on, and just wanted to voice my appreciation for the dedication that you have at Clark County. I know you've spent quite a few years in many voluntary roles, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My question is, the planning commission deals largely with important land use issues. Some candidates have been involved in land use decisions directly, and some have been involved in the decision-making process in other ways. Can you describe a time when you made a decision or had an opinion about a difficult planning or development issue? What was this issue, and what was your decision and opinion, and how did you make that decision?
Well, serving as the Chair of the Road Advisory Board, we have been involved with we have been involved with the railroad issues for some time. And our, our committee came to the conclusion on how we wanted to proceed. And we gave a presentation to the councilors at that time, based on that decision of, of our recommendation. And that was the, the decision that we all made collectively as the Railroad Advisory Board to make that recommendation to the councilors.
Great, thank you.
And we'll move on to Counselor Michelle Belkot.
Morning, Dan. I'm Counselor Michelle Belkot, District Two, Lighta, Salmon Creek, Hazelville, Minnehaha, and out to five corners. My question for you is if you're advising the Planning Commission on its Growth Management Act role, what would be some of your potential recommendations or considerations?
Well, I'm primarily concerned about wise growth of the county in, in every aspect. But I, I want to look at the things that make the county better for everybody. And I see opportunities for the county growth to resolve some of the issues that we have in Clark County, like people crossing the bridge every, every day to go to work. It would, would be wise to get some more jobs in Clark County. The other thing is, I, I just want to make sure that we have growth of, of housing in the right places and, in the right format. We, we know that it's going to grow in the next few years and want to make sure that it happens in the correct way.
Thank you, Dan.
Good morning, Dan. This is Karen Bowerman, District Three. Thanks for all that you do and have done with the county and for your interest in expanding it in this very detailed directions. And much of what you've dealt with already, of course, has been very detailed in other areas. So, given that, there are disagreements with people. And so this question revolves around those disagreements. When you disagree with planning staff on all variety of questions that come up, technical aspects or other aspects with the issue at hand, how do you deal with those disagreements?
How will I deal with them?
How do you deal with them? Yes.
Well, I mean, you, you present the facts as best you can and try to convince other people that the thing that you're advising on or you're making your decision on is, is for the benefit of Clark County. And i- if that doesn't work, you don't always win every argument. It's, that's a fact of life, unfortunately. So it's just a matter of putting together the facts that you believe are the best suited for the particular condition and present them as best you can in the situation. And if, if it doesn't go your way, you move on and go to the next issues.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll next move on to Counselor Sue Marshall.
Hi, Dan. Thanks for coming in for the interview and applying. So Sue Marshall, I represent District Five, the rural northern part of the county. And my question is, in your role as Planning Commissioner, you will be making recommendations on the Comprehensive Plan Update that will guide growth and development over the next 20 years. There are often competing interests and now new directives from the state related to climate change and housing affordability. How would you be able to set aside any personal beliefs or conflicts in order to address the broader community needs and to meet the GMA requirements?
Well, I, I would need to look at the requirements that, that we need to meet and then think about what's best for Clark County moving forward. And obviously, if there are overriding factors beyond my beliefs of, and, and prejudices in, in other directions, obviously, we need to make the best decision for Clark County and, and meeting all those goals that are required. I don't necessarily agree with all of them, but they're there and, and we need to deal with them and, and we'll deal with them in the best way we can and try to come up with a collaborative solution to whatever needs to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, so Chair Medgey, back to me. I want to give you an opportunity to amplify or expand on any of your previous answers to any of the questions that councils asked of you. So we have a few minutes remaining. And then, as I mentioned to you, we hope to stay on schedule and come back about 10:30 into public session with public nominations and discussion. You're welcome back at that time. So, Dan, do you have any answers that you'd like to amplify or expand on?
Well, I just want to state that my experience with the Board of Equalization, I've probably heard and seen pictures of every pothole and wetland and factor in Clark County because of the people that come in and appeal their property tax statements. And so I, I think I have a pretty good understanding of what the conditions are around Clark County. And in addition to that, with the Railroad Advisory Board, I mean, it sounds like it's a railroad thing. It's not. I've looked at all the zoning. I've looked at the Growth Management Plan. I've looked at the urban growth boundaries. And I've looked at many of the, the public issues surrounding the railroad and, and the conditions. And I've met with many of the homeowners in and around the railroad. We had a whole program, the, the Vice Chair and myself, with peoples, people around there, citizens that were involved with the, the homeowners group around there. And we met for over a year. We met about a dozen times with them and heard a lot of their concerns. And we tried to resolve as many as we could and, and make considerations for those things. So I, I think that all adds into my experience in Clark County with property issues. Like I said, the BOE has given me an opportunity to see lots of different issues in addition to just the wetlands. There's many different problems that homeowners have with their properties. And in that, not just homeowners, there's commercial properties and industrial properties that come into our organization and, and visit with us. One thing I also did this last year, I sat in on the Transportation Sounding Board on issues concerning transportation around the, the county. And I heard a lot of those issues that were things that I didn't even know anything about at, at, before attending those sessions. And I was able to contribute around the railroad. I know the concerns of the people in the Brushberry area, concerns about railroad crossings there. Some of them are pretty much uncontrolled. And I advised the transportation group of those issues around the railroad in, in that area. And they, they need to put that into their thinking going forward. So I think I have a pretty good understanding, better than the average bear, if you will, in Clark County, of many of the property issues that surround the property in Clark County. And I know a lot of the issues that Clark County needs to address going forward in developmental property. So I think I can contribute significantly to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, not only for the service that you've given to the county so far, but your willingness to continue to serve in this role as well. So, and I would just generally comment, you know, we had over 24 great applicants. And then we narrowed it down as best we could to five great candidates. We are going to have a very difficult choice with all the varied credentials of each of the candidates that have come before us. So, Dan, we'll perhaps see you back around 10:30 after we've concluded our executive discussion. For the rest of the council, we'll go ahead and suspend this meeting and get into executive session so we can have open discussion. So, does anyone need a break? I mean, we're maybe a couple of minutes ahead of time. I'm seeing no head nuts. Okay.
Just a small break. Just a small break.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, please, go ahead, Leslie.
So I just wanted to mention that when we go into executive session, just making sure that it's noted for the record that the council is going to executive session under RCW 423110 parentheses one parentheses, small letter G.
Okay, thank you. I, I did not see that on my agenda, so I was hoping you would come up with it. We'll go ahead and come back at 10:15, as we have on the agenda, into executive session under the RCW that the PA announced. So at this time, we'll adjourn from this meeting and come back into executive in just a few minutes. And hopefully, that's enough time of a break.
And then the council, just to make clear for the record, the council will be back at 10:30 in open session.
And I, I think I've said that about six times through this meeting. So yes, our intention is to come back at 10:30, back into public session. All right, let's go ahead and adjourn for now.
Do I need to log off of this? Okay.
No, Dan, you can stay on.
I feel like it's lingering. Talk about how long this thing is grabbed on and how long.
Go for a year and a half, Glenn. Glenn, go for a year and a half.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I can't complain.
Oh.
Hello, the Chair has asked to extend executive session for five minutes, so they now will be returning at 10:35. Thank you. Hello, the Chair has asked to extend for another five minutes, and the council will now be returning at 10:40. Thank you. Hello, council is extending the executive session for two more minutes and will now be coming back at 10:42.
Okay, we are back, but I do not see Karen. Oh, there I do. Okay, there's Karen. You, I think you beat me on. I don't hear you, though.
With a picture this time, though.
Okay, so sorry to the public and all the candidates for being a little bit late. And that's because of an executive session, we had really robust discussion on each of the candidates to fulfill our duties to make the best decision we can. So we are back in the public domain to begin discussion on, on nominations and voting. Is there a counselor that would like to start?
Yes, Chair.
Could I make a, say, just a process suggestion real quickly?
Go ahead, Glenn.
So I would suggest, and, and Leslie, maybe you can let us know if this would work properly, but I would suggest that we nominate and select the three that we intend to place on the commission. And then after that, have a discussion and a vote on who to select for which specific positions.
Yeah, so I don't, it's the first we've heard of that. I'm not necessarily in favor. These are at-large positions. We really just have a distinction between the short term and the long term.
That was my, that was what I was suggesting.
Okay. Sue, why don't we go, you had, you actually speaking first.
Yes. Yes, thanks. I would like to nominate Mark Burkhold for a six-year position on the Planning Commission.
So for your position?
For you. For a full term.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second further discussion.
I just want to verify that we're going to go forward with that model with a nomination, the name of a person, that we specify their term? Is that, is that what we're going to do, Gary? If, if you would just kind of.
Yes, and, and Counselor Marshall did say for a full term.
Yes, she did.
Okay, well, I'll add my two cents at like, pretty much the 20-plus other applicants. And then we narrowed it down to what we thought were the five most appropriate and strongest. Mark Burkhold has just an incredibly diverse, it's, it's very expansive, complicated resume. I mean, he's got a depth and breadth of experience in all the right areas, you know. Perhaps not the strongest in having to deal with GMA throughout his career, but every other issue that the Planning Commission would. So anyway, I, I believe he is a very strong candidate, as all the others. This is a tough, tough choice. Anyway, further comments by council? Okay, well, I, I'll, go ahead, Glenn. You had further comments?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in, and, and I also appreciate Mark's, his history, his background, his resume. But one of the things that really resonated with me was his statement that, you know, disagreement comes from an initial understanding. statement that, you know, disagreement comes from an initial understanding. So that's willing to concede that we have an opinion built on the experiences and knowledge that we have, but there's more experience and knowledge out there that can sway our opinions when we learn that information. So I think he's a great candidate and I will support him being on the Planning Commission.
Chair Medji, if I could interrupt. I just want to make sure who seconded the motion.
That was me, Council Young.
Okay, thank you, Council Young.
Okay, not hearing any other discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Were there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And I think we all look forward to being invited to one of his Thanksgiving dinners with all the family members and, and those that are serving right now, although we always say, good, go Army, beat Navy. That's just a service rivalry. Thank you for your family service to our nation and we look forward to your service on our Planning Commission. Okay, so next candidate to be discussed?
I would, oh, thank you. I would nominate Jeremy Baker for the two-year position.
I second that.
Chair Medji, muted.
No, can't hear you.
It's funny because it shows that I'm not muted.
Now we can hear you. We can hear you.
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now. Okay. Okay, so further discussion on Jeremy Baker.
I, I would just say about Jeremy, this is the second time that he's applied to the Planning Commission. I think he, he may not have depth of experience in land use, but he makes up for that, I believe, with his commitment to looking out for the future of our children and really a sincere desire to represent the best for Clark County.
Other discussion, comments?
You know, I, I would just say Jeremy is an, an interesting candidate. I, I appreciate also his, you know, having applied two years in a row. And there's always that, that discussion around experience. You know, experience can be, it's critical and it's important, but lack of experience also does provide for some fresh perspective. So I do agree that that can, can be of value and I, and I don't question his commitment to the community. I think with this, through this interview, he made it very clear that he's looking out for the county. He may not know all the answers, but he's looking at it. So I think that Jeremy could be a valuable member on the Planning Commission as well.
Chair?
Yes, please.
I would certainly concur that he would be a valuable, fresh voice. However, what I like to see with a fresh voice is that there has been a very strong effort on the part of the candidate to research the nature of the committee, the commission, the planning group, their, their processes, their experience, having read their minutes, maybe having visited some of the sites, having listened to meetings, having been involved before the fact, to learn as much as possible going into the initial meetings. That I did not see. And because of that, I have concerns about that lack of experience. Lack of experience can be one thing, but lack of experience combined with huge effort to learn upfront can be a plus. I didn't see that.
I will just chime in. The strength I see here is a fresh face, a different background. So cer- certainly lots of technical construction ability and background. He's got that. And I, I do want to emphasize that, you know, a lot of, a lot of people don't understand what a, what a service member gives up and his family gives up, especially during combat tours, putting their life on the line for their country, for their, you know, for their nation and local community. And his background, so that, that got his resume, my attention. I mean, he was a non-commission officer in charge of the lives of over 40 Marines in combat. So that got my attention and then the rest of his resume spoke volumes. It is a fresh face and I think different perspectives are important as people learn. Sometimes a fresh perspective of learning what the GMA is brings nuance to its interpretation. So I, I do heartily support giving him a chance on the short-term appointment. Further comments or questions?
I was impressed by his resume and his experience. He had operational experience, supervisory experience in construction and development and he had a lot of professional background as related to building and development, which I think is very needed. I agree with the sentiments about someone new with different ideas and a diverse background. And obviously, I mean, his combat experience, that's a, he knows how to serve and he has a servant's heart and he, he really cares genuinely about Clark County. And like me, he grew up in Clark County, so that was a plus to me. He has the back history of kind of what the county's gone through since he grew up here, so I appreciated that.
Further comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of Jeremy Baker for, to fulfill the short term, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the ayes have it, the motion carries.
Chair, I would, I would move at this point that we appoint Brian Halbert for another term, another full four-year term to the Planning Commission. I would just add that I have watched those meetings and I, I appreciate the sentiment, the, the conduct that he shows and the respect that's there and as well as his input and the perspective that he has.
I second that.
Okay, we do have a second. I think Michelle had it by a hair. Further discussion on Brian Halbert?
I agree with Glenn. I think we need someone with experience that's been on the board, like, like Counselor Young mentioned. It's a long process with a lot of experience and he has that, he has that breadth of experience and I appreciate that when it comes to making recommendations to the council.
I agree as well. Yep, he's been very thoughtful. His eyes are definitely open as far as what it takes to serve on the, in a Planning Commission role, so I, I think he's a great candidate.
Super. So I, I concur with all those comments so far. We did have a lot of great candidates here as, as we've discussed, people who have served in other capacities, served the county previously or continue to serve the county for many decades. And Brian's one of those as well. And his willingness to go another term, the Planning Commission speaks volumes. So any further comments, discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? The motion carries. So congratulations to the three that we've selected, but my heartfelt thanks to all that applied. They were all good candidates, some also with decades of service and proven service to their community and their county. A lot of expertise out there, a lot of expertise that's resident to this commission. We had so many great choices, so it was gratifying because so many boards and commissions, we get a vacancy and we have to re-advertise it because we don't get anyone to apply or we, we only get one person to apply. So I would really encourage the public to look for all vacancies at any level, even if it's something you're not interested in but want to serve your community, please apply. Any further comments by any other counselors?
Just put in a plug that we have an opening on our mosquito control board at the point, going along with that discussion. They're all important positions. And, and I just wanted to add, I really appreciate everybody. And I said this last time, you know, those that applied this time and didn't get appointed, please do so again. You know, we saw one candidate that did apply last time that got appointed this time. And this is a great discussion. I'm, I'm thrilled that there are 26 people willing to come in and advise us as a council. So thank you to the public for that.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise, I think that concludes our business this morning. Is, do we have, I see Kathleen's on and Christine Cook's on. There was nothing else to attend to, is that correct? And Leslie, there you are.
That's correct.
Okay, we are adjourned.